On February twenty fourth to order unless there's an objection seeing none. The meeting is called to order Councilman Henigan may can you lead us in the invocation and pledge please?
Please rise if you are able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliver it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where wishes stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public comments, I'll call your name, you'll have three minutes to speak, there's a clock, we have a lot of new people here tonight. There's a clock right there with the timer, it will start when you start, Gail Bowler. Hi, I'm sorry, you come up to the microphone. And then are y'all ready? Yeah, go ahead and start your three minutes.
Mayor, I'm the city of Dunwoody, Gail Bowler, I've been in Dunwoody for many years now. And first of all, just to comment, I love the work that's being done in the city planning and the new Dunwoody sign is just a delight, so. The purpose of my comment today is just regarding the top end expressway two eighty-five expansion. I own a property at Madison Square. And just an idea to to put out there for beautification, continued beautification of Dunwoody. Is the lot right next to to Dunwoody Square is for sale now. And I believe that it may potentially provide an emergency ingress or egress for Madison Square condominiums. Right now, there's only thirteen parking spots and there's four buildings with, I'm not sure exactly, but I think there's four buildings with up to four hundred units. And just wanted to consider communication with a cost to cure negotiation with GDOT or the federal government. For considering that, I believe it's lot one forty-six for a park or turnaround for emergency. Vehicles for deliveries, Amazon FedEx, because right now I can I can perceive a potential problem. When they turn Cotillion into a one-way with people getting in and out of Madison, so.
Thank you very much, so it's not a two-way conversation, but I did get your email and I think I responded and whatever, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Nina Arnold, you'll approach the microphone and when you start, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to come tonight, thank you all for the hard work. That you do for our city and its citizens, I come to you tonight wearing multi hats, I'm a Peachtree Middle School parent. Also a Dunwoody High School parent, a member of the PTSO board at Peachtree and also president of our Junior Wildcat Football Program. So I'm here obviously to talk to you about the pro feelings for the middle school field turf football conversion or the turf conversion on that field. Please do not be discouraged by the amount of parents that you see tonight, I think many of us literally did not know until about three hours ago. That this would be on your agenda, so we can tell you that we are representing a much larger body than is present here tonight. This is a topic that is very important to so many parents for the safety of our children. Just this morning, in fact, another citizen who's here tonight and I were giving a tour to prospective incoming parents at Peachtree. And as happens every time we give the tour, they're concerned about the field, they ask us about the safety of it, the condition of it, which they can see is poor. Just so you all know, there are eleven hundred approximately students that are using that every day for PE. That doesn't even include the hundreds of students and citizens that need access to that afterwards, as you know, the field space is very limited. Our Junior Wildcat Program uses the field at the high school, but once the junior varsity program begins their games and the girls' flag football. We are out of space and as you know, there's no other area, sometimes we are relegated to the baseball outfield, but in case of rain or other things, that also becomes unusable. And then we are without space, I know there are many other programs, a friend is going to talk to you about the club sports, but. Even tonight, as I was parking here, a friend texted me that she witnessed. A flag football practice going on there and a student had fallen in a hole and he was covered in mud, so it's. I feel like it's a need, it's a safety concern for our students and it would have a very, very large impact on the amount of bodies that it's touching every day. We understand that this was part of the intergovernmental agreement in the land swap years ago, so it's not really a surprise to anyone. And perhaps that the majority of the money is even allocated, so. Just want to speak as a citizen to encourage you all, if there's any way that we could make that happen or anything that we as citizens could do to support it. We would greatly appreciate it for our students and all the community sports, thank you.
Thank you, Eric Oliver, you'll press the microphone and you'll have three minutes. Oh, I think you can start, sorry.
I haven't started yet.
No, okay.
You want to put it back in three?
One second, can y'all reset it to three, please?
I was very surprised to see the turf field back on the agenda tonight and I'm pleasantly surprised by that. You know, the reason there is a city of Dunwoody, the reason y'all have seats up there. Is because we could not depend on DeKalb County to do the things we needed done for our community. You know, I read the report today that the state put out. Of the low performing schools in the state of Georgia. DeKalb County had forty-four on that list. The only counties that had more were Henry and Clayton, we expect that. What was interesting to me is there were no Dunwoody schools on that list. And the reason for that is is because we have a very generous and active. Community of caring parents. And businesses with foresight. Understanding that you protect the kids is good for business. Well. I think it's time for you guys to show up, okay? And. The interesting thing about, I don't know, facts and. Truth is it has a nasty tendency to not go away. And the truth is. Is. That field, that turf on that field. Would help many, many, many student athletes for years to come. You know, probably some of my best friends. And most precious people in my life come from my association with the sports community. If y'all aren't into building precious associations, I get it, okay? But the truth is, is y'all have had this in the budget for two years, you've been messing around with it for two years, you've been deceiving us for two years. It's time for y'all to put up or shut up, okay? And that's where I'm at today. And I'm just gonna stand here for thirty-two seconds. Y'all can do better, guys, y'all can do better. Thank you.
Hey, how are y'all, I'm Lindsay, I wrote it down, I apologize, I have I have a little bit of an accent when I get nervous and I'm super nervous. But I'm a mother of four with two current Peachtree students and two future ones. So I'm gonna talk to you a minute about being a parent and what I've seen and then my role at the on the PTSO, so. We are in desperate need of a turf field at our middle school, my daughter's in her third year playing soccer and the field conditions are a bit dangerous at times. Many girls and boys have stepped in holes injuring their ankles and when it rains, the field does not drain. We've had to buy a second pair of cleats, me personally, we had to buy a second pair of cleats. Just to have a backup from the mud and wetness from one practice. As VP of Club Sports, that field is also used by Ultimate Frisbee, Flag Football and PE. With a school of over eleven hundred, a turf field would be beneficial and touch many different students from all different ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds. We would be very appreciative of a turf field as a Peachtree PTSO member and we would put it to good use and take care of it. We're not asking for bleachers or lights or anything like that, but just a turf field that could be beneficial to all students, all people in Dunwoody would help. I think that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth. When you get to the microphone, you'll have three minutes, thank you.
Good evening, all, you all are doing a great job being here and your time. However, I was here, I don't know how many years ago, I've lived here about thirty years, it's when the zip line was built, way back then, when the parks started. I believe Council Citywoman Deutsch happened to be there and Councilman Henigan were the only two people who are interested in the fact that. I was concerned about the zip line and the noise for the fifteen or so residents that live in that area of Brook Run Park. I came here before all of you and said, what are you going to be doing about the noise that's probably going to happen with that zip line? Mr. Walker and I had a conversation, Mr. Henigan and I kept in touch with email, but I found out you guys can't take. Photos or whatever through the email anyway, and now Mayor Deutsch also kept in touch, but. Mr. Walker had mentioned at the time, he said, the noise won't happen after seven thirty, I promise, they'll close at seven. Number one, number two, when I said, well, I need some trees or something as a noise barrier because it's just open space there. Because I live right behind the zip line and he said, we can do that, we'll put that in. Neither of those things happened, not only does the zip line now stay open at nights till eleven. Now, I'm talking about sitting out, let's, I just want you all to imagine sitting out in your backyard or trying to and hearing this. Screams piercing the air, I'm not talking about kids laughing, they are not laughing, everyone, if you've ever been to the zip line, how many of you have actually been there? Do you hear the parents yelling, you can do it, you can do it, come on, awesome, you're just awesome, I I I agree with them, the kids are awesome, it's great fun. It is, but when you're somebody sitting in your own backyard trying to have a nice glass of wine after work and de, you know, deescalate and hear the. Screaming children, oh my goodness, it just, it's heart wrenching. If somebody were being raped or molested back there, I swear to goodness, I would just ignore it, I would think it's one of the kids on the zip line. Make a long story short, you guys did camp run a mutt, you were angry about the noise when the neighbors came and told you about that, you shut them down. Please do the same for the zip line, don't let them work at nighttime, don't let them do this at night, I don't care till seven thirty and also, please. Give me some sort of noise barrier, anything, I can sit with a committee one day, I'd be more than happy to, just let me know. I just need a reprieve, thank you.
Thank you, it's Rachel Waldron or Jay, somebody want to give her a card and make a contact, please?
Thank you ever so much.
Thank you. Andrew Ziffer, and this is the last card I have, there'll be another public comment session at the end or. If you haven't filled one out and you still want to speak, you have about a minute to get it filled out, go ahead, Andrew, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Deutsch for having me here, I wrote some notes in about five minutes while we're down dinner, so it's gonna be hopefully very quickly, Jay said I did not have the ten minutes I requested. But forgive me if I don't have complete information, I've only been in this role for two months, but I am speaking on behalf of the DeKalb County School District tonight. From what I understand, there was a survey completed in two thousand twenty-three and the PMS fields, the Peachtree Middle Fields, the turf was one of the. Top items discussed as a high priority in the city of Dunwoody to to get fixed. And I know I the county school system has a PhD in not having enough money, I know you have competing interests and funds and. What you do with your money right now and I know the million dollars that was allocated for the the turf probably has other uses right now. But I will say right now, it is. The DeKalb County School System has a PhD and 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 not having enough money and for us to not look at this. As generosity of the city of Dunwoody is offering would be irresponsible of us and I'm here to let you know that that we. Want to work with you to make sure these fields are done. Today I spoke to Dr. Horton and Dr. Horton and I had a conversation about this and both of us are committed to if there is an overage of the fields costing more than one million dollars. We are committed to getting an agenda item on the DeKalb County School Board Agenda to pay for the overage. Now, it does take obviously a quorum to get the money, but we are committed to paying for anything over the million dollars that it may cost, I saw that it costs. Could cost anywhere from one point two to one point two five million dollars right now. And I want you to know that I know there will be some type of agreement between Dunwoody. And the district and we are committed to making that agreement work, whatever it looks like. We are committed to being good partners with the city of Dunwoody and if we have not been in the past. We need to fix that and we need to do better, we have great baseball fields there, every time I pass them and I'm running by Brook Run. They're amazing and then I pass by the Peachtree Middle Track and it looks like it's. Not as nice, let's just say that, and I think. This will be an amenity the community, the community will have forever, every single middle school student who attends public school will see that field. And will use that field and community members also use that and just to dispel any rumors. DeKalb County School District does not have any effort right now that is allocated to fixing middle school fields right now. So that middle school field will continue to look like it looks right now for the foreseeable future because there are no funds allocated. We're basically two hundred million dollars into our next sploshed funding and so we have a backlog of projects already. And middle school fields are nowhere to be found and it would be great to get that done and Dunwoody and have another great partnership with the the district. So thank you for that and please consider this.
That concludes public comment for this session, as I said, we'll have another session of public comment. After the meeting, if it's okay with council, I'd like to move four to three. I don't know if I have to make that motion or if I could just.
So moved.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Move by John, second by Rob, any discussion of switching the order of items? Hearing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, we have just adjusted the agenda, Sharon, did you catch that? Okay, so I know I kind of threw that at Rachel, sorry. I'm sorry, we have the consent agenda first, I turned my paper over to do that, all right, we have the consent agenda, does anyone have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Move by Tom.
Second.
Second by Joe, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye, any opposed, hearing none, that passes unanimously. Now, Rachel, thank you for catching that, whoever told me. No, we.
Can you see it? Yeah, okay. Yep. Good evening, so yes, obviously, we're we're here to to discuss the Peachtree Middle School turf. We spoke about this last year, so what I'm bringing in front of me tonight is just a slightly updated. Pricing structure, again, everything has been very informal, we did not put out a formal solicitation, so the assumptions on the memo within your packet are. Assuming a ten percent contingency, which we do on most of our projects. And then estimated bond and insurance requirements to work with the city, so just a little bit update there. Just a few kind of overview facts for where we are now, so our existing IGA, we have a twenty-five year term that was signed November of two thousand sixteen. What this allows is district use Monday through Friday, seven AM to six PM. And then the city is also able to use this Monday through Friday, six to eleven, Saturday, Sunday, seven to eleven. And then Monday through Sunday, seven to eleven during non-academic school year. This also with the swap allowed the district to have access to the baseball fields five hours a day. The post-closing agreements that were listed for city responsibilities were to install sod, irrigation, goalposts in the fieldhouse, which you've done. Pay for and repair stormwater system underfield and track area, pay for and maintain the stormwater system. Pay for and maintain the field and track area and irrigate the field and track area, which includes paying for the water costs, these were all. To be done, which they were twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, so we're good with that. And just a little overview of our current usage, so the high school boy soccer, high sticks, which is lacrosse and girl soccer currently use our multi-use. Those are the rectangular fields at the back of Brook Run from four to six PM, all three of those groups have usage agreements. The the time is the same, the language is the same, and the agreements read that that their individual programs are scheduled through the DHS. Use Sports Liaison, so parks staff has no say in who gets what, that's that's within the school groups to determine. No school time is requested on the multi-use turf fields in the summer months, obvious reasons. And then on Thursdays, the high school high sticks uses the fields on Thursdays. And then the other field is open and then at six PM, brush union takes over, so during the day, during the week, those fields are are mostly open. Currently, we house flag football practices at Wildcat Park in the spring season, just because several of these other groups are also going. This has seemed to to work out great. And then with outside of the those football field usage times, we do run out to non-school groups, so like your. Your youth and your your adult booster programs that aren't affiliated with the school. Last year, we brought in about fifteen thousand dollars in rent to over new, so just just a little bit to kind of keep keep the activity going on those fields. So the again, the the facts of where where we are now, but I'm just here to to open up the discussion, answer any questions you may have.
Do you want to go over the pricing you currently have? I know it's in the memo, but it was not in the slideshow.
Yeah, so the there's two groups, a very similar name, so advanced sports surfaces came in around about one point two million. And again, these are, these are the assumptions with bond and insurance requirements, we have not put this out formally, can't say that enough, this has all been very informal. And then advanced sports group, which has done turf workforce in the past, they were a little bit higher, about one point two million. And what what these groups have done is we've asked them to just preliminary go out, look at the football track area. Determine what they they think they need for site work and then to to install the turf.
Okay. Questions, comments, discussion, oh, John, go ahead.
Thank you, Rachel, thank you for adding this to the agenda, thank you, Eric, for adding this to the agenda, I think it's an important item. It's been on a budget for several years and we really haven't had much discussion, so I thought it was time to bring this forward again, thank you. We had comments regarding a number of things and even your memo, tell me about the lights, we added the lights as well. I'm not sure it was in your, maybe I missed it, if it was in your slideshow, I missed it, but we also paid lots of money for the lights and I think we paid for the light usage at night. Again, I think it's an important issue, I think these these amenities are needed by the community, we've talked about it over and over and over again. This item was budgeted back before any bond referendum, we were ready to go with this and I think we need to look at this. Our children are getting older, our community has needs, the community, we had the principal here of Peachtree Middle School not too long ago. And you know, saying, please, please do that, Andrew, thank you for coming tonight, thank you for giving us the perspective of the school system. And thank you to the parents that are here talking about this, I just think this is something that we have talked about, we have budgeted. And we have sort of put on the back burner and I'm not a hundred percent sure why, I think we need to move forward, I think it's an important issue, we are doing. Behind the scenes improvements to Brook Run in the sense of a maintenance facility, we are putting in. Other things and paths and miscellaneous other improvements around the city, but we haven't moved and you know, made any improvements on this project. And I'd like to see it moved forward. A question I did have that wasn't discussed was the water in the sense of the water retention pond. Do you know where we are on that, is that, has that been studied at all in the sense of there's any documentation from the first installation, do you have any documentation on that?
There there is some, I could I could do some digging and and find it for you, yep.
I just think that's going to be part of the process in the sense of, you know, where's that water going to go, I believe the water retention pond that was dug was of capable size. But that will affect the price at some point if we decide to go forward. So be mindful of that, other than that, I can't think of anything else really to say except I'm really hopeful that this project can move forward because again, I think it's the community. The community wants this, thank you.
Just admin Rachel, the, look, did did we get this presentation?
No, I asked for the presentation.
So this is really good information on there, could you go back to the other screen as well, the prior screen about the usage, what is, well, actually.
So this, there were two slides.
Where's the one that shows what the city's responsible?
The next, the one that was up when you asked her to change.
Can you go to that one then, sorry?
The post-closing.
City to install, okay, yeah, so when I, one thing I just is is that we've got the, it's ongoing capital, but then let's look at. Estimated annual ongoing maintenance, et cetera, what that would look like too when we get further down the road, thanks.
Thank you, Rachel, I just want to start by. Clarifying some misunderstanding with some of the comments that I've heard. So the city of Dunwoody spent about two years working on prioritizing our capital projects, we actually had a citizens committee. That was put together to identify the top projects. I actually chaired that committee, so I feel I'm the appropriate person to kind of talk about what that the work that committee did. We did a comprehensive. Plan for a number of capital projects for the city that totaled seventy-five million dollars. This was one of those projects, the committee was made up of nine residents. We began with a hundred and four, a list of a hundred and four projects on that list. And the committee narrowed that down to twenty-one total projects that they identified as priorities for the city. Those, just to be clear, those final priorities were not ranked by the committee. They were just identified as this is what we feel are the most important things for the city to focus on. So based on that information and and some other community input we had, the city discussed a capital plan and we put together this plan. Like I said, it was a seventy-five million dollar plan, sixty million dollars of the funding for that plan was going to come from a bond. Seven and a half million dollars was coming from federal grants and seven million dollars was coming from capital reserves. Basically some money that the city had in the bank. That had dedicated to capital projects, so we had seventy-five million dollar plan. Eighty-one percent of that was to be funded by the bond referendum, the bond referendum was not approved by the voters. So when that happened, in essence, the entire plan. Has to be reevaluated, so just because, so certain projects were funded from certain areas. But now now I think that the that the council needs to reevaluate our our entire capital. Plan and identify what the top priorities are for the city. And because right now our funds are extremely limited and it's, I mean, put it another way, let's say you decided you you really wanted to buy a new car this year. But in January, you got laid off. Now you're not collecting a salary, you're gonna have to re, 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 you know, assess your priorities and and as much as you would like a new car. You might not be able to afford it this year, so I think that's where the city is, we have a, we have a long list of projects, we need to as to assess. Where that very limited capital gets reassigned. You know, Andrew, I appreciate you coming tonight, no disrespect to you, but you know. DeKalb County Schools talking, being cash poor, doesn't really resonate well with me, you know, the this, the the. You know, the county's legal but annual legal budget's bigger than our entire budget for the entire operating budget for the city of Dunwoody, so just to put things in perspective, so. You know, and again, I'm not, that's not a personal attack on you, it's just putting things in in perspective as far as sources of funding. And and where the where they should go, so honestly, I'll say this too. Mr. Oliver spoke about the importance of youth sports and and other speakers as well and I agree a hundred percent with them, I. I myself grew up with sports, very involved with youth sports with my own kids, I was a board member down Murphy Camler, I'm a GHSA certified coach. I coached baseball and football at the youth middle school and high school level, so I know all about. The importance of youth sports, which is one of the reasons why I wanted to be a part of that capital project. Committee, to be honest with you, because I wanted to make sure, and we had several. New athletic facilities that would have multiple. Sports multi-use fields that would have been added to the city parks. And as well as a softball complex and other additions to our inventory, it would have been amazing for the kids and. and as well as a softball complex and other additions to our inventory. It would have been amazing for the kids in Dunwoody. It really would. So personally, I think we need to have a bigger discussion. I think, I'm just going to throw this out there though, you know, one of my thoughts on this particular project is, you know, when, I think our limited resources would be best allocated investing into building a new facility on property that the city owns. Because we don't own this property. The DeKalb County School System owns this property. It's not city of Dunwoody property and we only have usage of that property 31% of the day, 31% of the usable day. When I say usable day, that's from seven AM to 11 P M. We only got it for five hours a day. I think our residents are better served investing that money into building a new facility, a new turf field. We have a plan for one at Wildcat Park. We had a full build out at that park. Maybe we can phase that and get that field built earlier. I don't know. But that way, now we have a field that we can use at our discretion. We're not limited. The plan, the initial plan that was approved was actually had that line for lacrosse. So that would be a kind of a home field for lacrosse, but it would also be able to be used for any rectangular field soccer, football as well. So that's just my thoughts, but I thought it was important for the, for people to know that when they say that this was budgeted by the city, it really wasn't budgeted. It was part of a much larger capital plan that 81% of the money was not approved by our voters. So now we have to kind of reassess those priorities and where we're going to allocate those limited funds that remain. So I just want to bring that up. Thanks.
Go ahead.
I just have a, I guess a question. Remind me, and I think you told me this once before, but what's the expected lifespan or life expectancy of, of the artificial field?
Um, if you can get eight to 10 years out of it, that's great. As long as it's groomed properly. We're about, we just started year eight for the baseball field. So there, because we groom that weekly and everyone takes care of it. So if you, if you maintain it properly, eight to 10.
All right. So we're basically a hundred thousand a year for turf. All right. Got it. Thank you.
Catherine.
Hi. What has been the holdup in prior years? Because if we've been talking about this for years, it's a DeKalb Schools I G A issue. Is that your understanding?
So I appreciate our board member coming. I will point out to anyone listening that about 75 to 80% of your property tax bill goes to the school system. They had, they just bought a six and a half million dollar building that I would argue they don't need. That would have been six middle school fields. But several years ago, when Dr. Horton got here, he sent his, some of his leaders to meet with the mayors of DeKalb County because they wanted to partner and share facilities. And that was great because we had not had that willingness before. And this was probably about the time that the capital committee was meeting. In that meeting is the mayors got enthusiastic, more enthusiastic with a dose of suspicion. It was clear that they weren't willing to put forward an intergovernmental agreement that met the requirements of state law. So in Georgia, one governmental body cannot give another governmental body something without value in return. So for example, when we first became a city, there was an, a crosswalk at Tilly Mill where one side was Dunwoody North, but the road was Dorville. And we tried to, we could not put the crosswalk in unless we got something in return of equal value from Dorville. That's the simplest way I can explain it. It's called the gratuities clause. It is what it is. At that meeting, it was clear that while they were enthusiastic about cities investing in their property in the county, DeKalb County and the unincorporated areas, they weren't really eager to put forth intergovernmental agreements that equaled the same amount of money. So in our case, they were offering initially, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, a five or 10-year extension, which the numbers would not have worked. Over the years, the discussions have gone differently, even occasionally with one, I'm going to maybe say this wrong because it's been going on for a year or two, with one department head telling Eric one thing and the superintendent contradicting that person. The bond failed, flat out failed. There is a message we received from the taxpayers. So now, is it okay if I go now? Talk. So now we sit in a place where we have not only really limited capital funds and we had a list of projects. Because I think it's important for taxpayers to understand this discussion and where I'm coming from of the, what was the number y'all ended up with? Twenty-one projects, only two did not come from existing plans. Like they weren't already in the transportation plan or they weren't already in the parks plan or they weren't in the comp plan. Was the, this, this field plus the maintenance building, which ironically we're talking about in a minute at Brook Run Park. Which isn't to say they're bad plans, but there was no vetting. There was no discussion of what does it look like to spend a million dollars of DeKalb, Dunwoody taxpayer money on a field that we don't control most of the time? And, and how do we maintain it? How do we keep it going? With the school system as our partner who is not always, I want to be very careful because I actually really like Dr. Horton and I have a lot of optimism for, for that. But historically, they haven't always been the best partner. I'll, I'll leave it at that. But in the meantime, on top of, on top of this, the fact that the bond failed, we're now in a really big period of uncertainty. Because we don't have any idea if there's going to be federal money for infrastructure. Not one idea, not one, not one sense that there's going to be one cent that comes our way for projects. So before we can spend money on a piece of property that the taxpayers of Dunwoody don't own and have no control over, I'm going to give you a hypothetical and I'm going to tell you where it comes from. There is, the school system has empty property on North Shallowford Road. Years and years ago, when I was just a councilperson, good old days, when I was just a councilperson, the school system reps came to me because that piece of property on Shallowford, this old Shallowford school site is in my district. And they said, we'd like you to lease it for 25 years. You can put fields on it. It'll be great. But if we need it in seven years, we're going to ask for it back. And the scenario that I foresaw was, okay, well, you know, you're, you're suggesting we invest funds that we pay you rent, that we invest funds to build fields. And then you're going to come and you're going to tell the community, we have a crisis and we need that space back. And then what is a council, a future council going to do? Because then you're forced to make a decision about recreational facilities versus something that there's an immediate need for, like classroom space. So that's my first, I, I just want to be clear that we did, there was no, when this deal was made in November, 2016, there was no anticipation that we would turf this field. That, that wasn't part of the deal. And in fact, the lights were not part of the deal as far as I remember. I think the lights were extra, right? What? Oh, I don't think the lights were part of the deal. I think we did them because there was, we were asked to do them and it made, given our short window of using it. But we have zero control over that field on a Saturday morning. It's not, we don't have staff to sit there and say, oh no, you're not supposed to be here. And I'm worried about, we've done a sinking fund for our other fields to replace the turf. It won't cover the whole cost, but it will take the edge off future replacements. I also am a little confused that if you'll go to your other slide, that during the fall, with the exception of one field on Thursdays, the other field is available from four to six. And we have a deal with the schools, with the schools, come use our fields from till six. I mean, if an elementary school wanted to do something, it's starting at 2:30, I presume they could do it. And so I'm, I'm struggling to understand why at a minimum, like it would be a better argument if those fields were full and then you ask us to spend a million dollars. But, well, they're not. I mean, our parks director, this is, they're not full. They're not full in the fall or in, and no schools using them in the summer, which maybe makes sense because it's summer and it's 110 degrees. But if, so, so maybe there's a communication problem and someone doesn't understand what's available. But this is what, I mean, this is what our parks department is telling us. I have zero reason to doubt that these fields are not available.
I just want to make a point. To be perfectly clear, we reserve, the city of Dunwoody reserves the Brook Run, the turf fields at Brook Run for city of Dunwoody's school activities from four to six every day. Thank you.
So we have a lot to think about. We have to figure out how we're going to meet the needs. We have, we have, we applied for a federal grant that we didn't get for the North Peachtree Corridor, about how to make it safer for kids to walk to school. There's all kinds of things that we have to figure out in a period of really big uncertainty for every local government in the United States about infrastructure funding. And we're going to do that. We're going to figure this out. We're going to talk about it. We're going to work through it. In the meantime, I think it'd be really great if the field space that we've authorized as a council, which is fairly unique, to do it the way we've done it. Usually it's the other way, like Sandy Springs, they have a partnership with the Fulton County Schools. And they do programming at the Fulton County Schools. We're doing the opposite. But we've set aside this field space and it's not being used. So I think that, you know, I think it would be great if it's being used. You know, that's, and, and Andrew, to your point, a year ago, the, one of the priorities for the next SPOSS, maybe it's even been less than a year because at the time, was going to be middle school athletic facilities. I realize that the school system SPOSS budget has kind of blown to smithereens and there's all kinds of struggles, but we were told repeatedly that that was going to be something they invested in, as it is at the high school. The lights that the community raised money for and paid for, every other high school in DeKalb got from, or is getting from SPOSS funds. So I'm reluctant, I'm, I'm concerned, but we have to figure out with the limited pot of money we have, how to best use it, how to best serve the children of this community, but also how to be the most responsible with taxpayer funds. That's my two cents. And we've got to go through the project list and figure out, I mean, we don't even, we, we have a lot we have to figure out. Stacy.
And I, I guess I just want to again, point out to the public that we have usage agreements with five athletic teams from Dunwoody schools. We just made it so that the Peachtree Middle School softball girls team that is relatively new has access to the city field right by their school. We are in full support and what we can do for our local athletic teams. And really to suggest otherwise, kind of hurts my heart because I'm a huge youth sports supporter as well, just, just more gymnastics. But youth sports is everything and it is those connections and we've tried to do it and we've tried to make our, our turf fields as available as much as possible to the, to, to, to this, to the sports teams. And I, you know, I, I fully support whatever we can do to make sure that they have continued access.
So next steps is to review, I think, at the retreat and potentially we won't get it all finished at the retreat, but to do a, on a, a review this year, the spring of, with an understanding from our, our department heads of, of, as much as we can read the tea leaves on what we think is going to happen with federal funding, to try to figure out where we go from here. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah. And I just want to just reemphasize the fact that myself and probably others are not denying that we lack the facilities here in the city that we would like to have. The question is, how do we get them? And so, I mean, I'll commit to working, I, I think what it's going to take is working together with these organizations to come up with a plan that we can, we can effectively execute with the limited funding we have. So I mean, I'll personally commit to working with the groups and, and meeting with you guys and, and trying to figure it out and identify a way that this, you know, we, to, to identify the best possible way of moving forward and getting these fields to the kids. Cause I mean, like, as I had mentioned earlier, this is why I got involved with the committee is I, I wanted to make sure that the kids at Dunwoody have, have places to play their sports in their own neighborhood and not have to go, you know, when I, I had, I, when my kids were growing up, I had to take them, I had to go up to Norcross, I had to go to Brookhaven, I had to go to all over the place because the, the facilities didn't exist that we have today. It's a little bit better today. It's not where I would like it to be. But doesn't mean we can't keep working towards that. So reach out to me. Let's, let's have some, some good conversations and see where we can take it.
And to be clear, Andrew, lovely that they want to share cost. Maybe they can up their, over, maybe there's a room for discussion there as well. About, because it's their property. It's an investment on their property, not, it's an investment for our children, which is very important. But we lose so much control, unlike the baseball fields where they use them till four and then they're all ours. This is always going to be their land. Unless they want to, we could talk, if they want to give it to us, we could probably work something out. But that's the thing is, is that we won't have, we have no control. You know, it's their land. It would, so that's, that's a concern. So, but we will continue to work on this and go from there. And our retreat is in the middle of March, so we will continue to work on this. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Thank you, Rachel.
Ready?
Yes, you can go start whenever you want.
Yeah. We're in the final design phase for the rebuild of the Brook Run maintenance facility with construction plan for later this spring. And tonight I'm here to discuss the approach to the green building certification for the project. The, the city has a green building policy that was adopted by the city council about 15 years ago now, but, but I think this is really the first time that we built a, a new occupied building. So it's really the first time that the policy's been put into action. And just a little bit about the policy, the stated purpose of the policy is to establish guidelines for the city to design and construct buildings in a sustainable manner. As stated in the policy, green buildings accomplish this by focusing on three main areas. Efficient use of energy, water and other resources. Protecting occupant health, think indoor air quality, lighting. And then third is reducing waste and pollution. The stated intent of the policy is to use one of three certification programs to determine what, what constitutes sustainable building. And the three programs listed in the policy are leadership and energy and environmental design, commonly known as LEED certification, EarthCraft and Energy Star. The, the maintenance facility design consists of two one-story buildings. The original concept was for two, a two-story building, but this, this design here has, reduces the construction cost significantly. The warehouse building, which is on the right, will be a 3,300 square foot building primarily for storage of equipment and materials. It doesn't really lend itself to green building certification because it will be a prefab metal building. No windows are planned, no air conditioning. It's really not a, a space that people are going to be in other than getting tools and equipment in and out. A lot of the aspects of, of green building won't apply to such a simple structure, but we can use green building principles where there's an opportunity to do so for that building, such as efficient plumbing fixtures, lighting, but you probably won't be able to check enough boxes to actually achieve an official certification. The other building is a 3,000 square foot office building for parks staff and maintenance contractors offices. So what applies to that facility is this clause in the building, a green building policy. Facilities and buildings under 5,000 square feet, which the office building is, are encouraged to be designated LEED. That's what the policy says. But then it goes on to say, there are some exceptions where if, if it meets certain criteria, it could be certified as Energy Star, EarthCraft Light. The exceptions that are listed in the policy are shown here, historically designated buildings where, where LEED adds 20% to the project cost or or if there's no practical green alternative, which is, the warehouse would really fall under number three. But the office building, the only thing that could apply there would be the cost exception. You know, looking at it, 20% cost increase is, it's a lot. I mean, on this project, we would have, we could spend $500,000 extra dollars going for a LEED certification and we still would be below that 20% threshold. So it, it's, that's why we're really bringing this forward tonight is that is a significant threshold. So what we're proposing is, we've gotten multiple proposals for going for both LEED certification and for the EarthCraft certification to compare the costs and requirements. The EarthCraft, just for consultant fees, this is not construction cost because we don't really have those determined at this point. But just for consultant costs to go, go through the certification and get the certification, it would be about a $60,000 savings to go to EarthCraft, which is about 2% of the total project cost. And note, as I said, these are just the consultant costs, not any construction cost. As far as the requirements of each program, we've listed here out the major categories for comparison. The focus areas are similar, but the specific requirements will vary between the two programs. And in your agenda, I included the, the actual worksheet for the EarthCraft. So you can, you can see some of the things that they look at to try to earn points for the certification. So as I said, we're recommending to go with the EarthCraft certification due to the size and nature of the project and the, the tangible cost savings that we can, we could see by doing that. I'll try to answer any questions.
Catherine?
Clearly LEED is very expensive and it isn't necessarily better than EarthCraft or Energy Star. Are you, do you agree with that?
I, I think so. I mean, the policy lists all three as acceptable certifications. The, the EarthCraft, I don't, you know, I'm not an expert on any of them, but the EarthCraft really focuses on the, the energy efficiency of the building and the insulation of the building. They will actually come out during construction and inspect and test to make sure that everything is sealed and, and, you know, commission the, the heating and air system. But just based on the overall categories of what they look at, they pretty much cover all the same areas from transportation to water efficiency to lighting to energy efficiency. So I, I mean, I think for this size project, it's, it's a perfectly acceptable program. It's, it's sponsored or it's a South Face program. If you've ever heard of South Face, they're an Atlanta nonprofit that focuses on sustainability. And it's been around for a while. It started as a residential certification, but they've moved to do light commercial and multifamily also.
Is this, is this green building policy in, in an ordinance, i.e. is it going to be under the rewrite of the ordinances?
No, it's, it's a standalone policy that council approved back. A lot of these policies started when we went for our original green government certification with, with Atlanta Regional Commission. And I think that's where this originated, which one of their requirements is to have a, a green building policy.
So you need it to be changed? Are you?
I think, I mean, that 20%, like I said, is a high threshold. The council may want to consider modifying the policy to, to maybe bring that threshold down.
Okay, thanks.
Rob?
Rob? You know, it may be useful just to have a better understanding of the differences between the two, but on its face, I mean, if, if they're essentially the same, I mean, why wouldn't we go for the less expensive option? I, I would just be, you know, you mentioned integrated processes, you know, maybe some explanation what that is. I, I think LEED also has some different sourcing requirements and things like that. So just, you know, if, if we're going to be implementing this, just to understand kind of a true comparison would be helpful. And then, you know, there'll be additional costs to meet these requirements. I'd be interested to also see what the savings might be long-term in terms of, you know, we're capital outlay now for operational savings down the road, just to have those numbers to share. You know, we're spending tax money. But in, in general, I'm glad you brought this to us. And if they're, if they're similar on the face, obviously I think we should. The label to me isn't important. It's, it's what the actual outcome is. And if EarthCraft is the better bargain, let's do that.
But Joe?
Yeah. Thanks, Michael, for putting this together. But yeah, kind of like dovetailing what Rob said. I, I see you presented the EarthCraft information, but I don't know what Energy Star levels are there and what that would cost. I, I see the LEED in EarthCraft, but I don't see the back, the, you know, supporting information on what LEED is. And then I don't see what Energy Star is there as well, so we're kind of missing either of those two. And then I see the cost here just for consultant, but is there a order of magnitude? So like, do we know, like, here's a, a build out that's not Energy Star, not EarthCraft, or not LEED? This is what the buildup price would be? And then what's the factor times whatever amount for one of those three on top of it? Just kind of know. And then, and then further granular, just more information. I see that EarthCraft has three levels. There's certified, there's gold and platinum. So I kind of would like to just know what that factor is. If we look at what is base build out, not doing anything? And then what is the additional we doing? Energy Star, EarthCraft or LEED? All right. And then we got to decide what we want the consultant to design to?
Yeah, you know, we, we didn't really look into Energy Star. Energy Star, you're probably familiar with. This is the same where they do your appliances. You know, you have an Energy Star rating on your appliances. I, we do have our construction manager. I'm going to just ask if he thinks he could put a cost escalation on what any of these programs add to your construction. I mean, would you?
Well, can you get to the microphone, please? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Identifying the cost and doing the cost analysis on what would, you know, eventually be the total construction cost of LEED versus EarthCraft would require us to spend money now on both consultants. We can probably put together some historical data. I'm sure EarthCraft has some of that on what, what that would be. But for the exact build, it would be difficult to understand what the premium would be on one versus the other unless we actually went through the evolution, which would take multiple months. You know, to, to keep the process moving, we need to, we need to pick one now. You know, otherwise it, the project becomes more expensive in any, in any case.
So the only thing I know is that the difference in the call consulting cost, but I don't know the difference in the total price cost. Even a factor, I'm not asking for a quote, but a factor times point two-five or versus point one. You know what I mean?
I don't know. I, I don't have that answer, but we can ask both the, you know, LEED consultants that have submitted on the job as well as the EarthCraft consultants if there's a factor that when we started going down the road of the certification itself, we may be able to get baseline certification without altering either design. So in other words, it's, you know, most of the buildings are being designed around these at a baseline efficiency rating, which is great. It's what, it's what the architects and engineers are start, are striving to do. So looking at it through that lens, you truly are paying the, you're paying for the premium for LEED over EarthCraft to have that stamped on your building versus EarthCraft Light. But, you know, we can, once again, that doesn't negate the question that you asked and we can go back and ask if there's any statistics on what each would require, you know, what, what each premium would be to see if they have that.
Yeah, not, not asking for a hard number, just a, a factor, a general rough order of magnitude.
We can ask that question. The, the other, you know, component just that, that Michael hit too is, you know, for the warehouse, I think it would be important just to make that decision if we can now because we can't sort of, the feedback that we've gotten just by scoping the, the consultants, just by picking up the phone and having these conversations are, you know, if you want to make that, you know, more expensive by putting windows and occupancy sensors and an HVAC system that may be efficient or not and insulated values. It's, those doors are going to be open all the time with maintenance facilities going in and out. So running that cost down on the warehouse facility, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So then we're driven more toward the, the office building, which, as we said, is about 3,000 square feet. The way, you know, to be cost effective with the city's money, that build, you know, although it's going to be constructed for long-term, it's still going to be like a really, really nice house. I mean, if you think about it, it's 3,000 square feet. It's going to have all of the Energy, you know, Star ratings that you would want. This is really more geared toward that. The EarthCraft Light is really more geared toward kind of a higher-end residential build than a, you know, a commercial build, which is why we gravitated toward this. And, you know, once again, we didn't do it in a vacuum. The, you know, the architect and engineer evaluated this from a third-party perspective and said, this is really the best bang for the buck for the city and we're probably going to end up with the, you know, same efficiency across the board. So that's why we thought it would be the best use of the taxpayers' money to go down this road.
Thanks. And last, I mean, I, I agree. We'll see what the warehouse building, the as-is, yeah, sure. Not having to go up to the next level on a warehouse building. Okay, thanks.
John?
Yeah, you've taken my thoughts immediately to heart. If I look at the drawings, you got 3,300 square feet of warehouse space and you have less than that in the office building. You can't make that open, big roll-up door warehouse building efficient. It's just not going to happen. So again, I don't see the need for going LEED. I don't see that it's worth the money. And again, Michael, I was a little confused on the memo that was attached to this item. It was not listed for this date and it was a completely different subject. I almost thought it was a two-part presentation, but I had now looked at the date on your memo, which is dated from November of '24. So the memo that you provided us is not current.
Okay.
So again, I don't know what your memo said. I don't know what the total cost was. You were giving us percentages in this. What, what's the total cost for this project? If I could ask that, just one.
The construction cost right now is $3 million.
So $3 million for this maintenance. Okay, thank you. But again, the memo that you presented in the packet is not current and I missed it. I thought it was two items. I, I missed the date on that your memo. Anyway.
The wrong memo must be.
It's okay. It's okay. We'll get over it. It's a discussion item. But just my thoughts, it's not worth making the warehouse and the big concrete pad and doing all the consulting for LEED. Do the best you can. And if we need to upgrade the memo, what's in the policy is pretty good. It gives you the option of downgrading. So I think that's where I would lead downgrade high-efficiency windows and some nice air conditioning and call it a day.
Go ahead, Stacy.
I just have a clarification. With our, with the city's own policy, we have to make the office building something. Like, because it doesn't fit one of the exceptions. We have to follow our own rules.
Right.
See, right?
I mean, you can waive your policy, but yes, the policy says you need to do one of these.
We need to do one of those. And clearly the warehouse doesn't fit the exception. So, yeah, I, I will look to the experts and if, and if you guys are comfortable with EarthCraft, then it's fine with me.
I can ask, do you have else? Okay. So a million years ago, when LEED certification became a thing, it was apparent that someone could come in or a builder could come in and architect could come in and do everything required and save a lot of money by just skipping the certification part. So when we look at the, right now you show us the added consultant and obviously this will have to come back to us as an action item because we can't put it on consent because the memo didn't, we need more information. But is the, is there more we could save by just taking the steps and not, not going for certification? I mean, I understand what our policy might say. I'm, I'm looking for every dime at this point to save. And so.
So for EarthCraft, are you talking about for LEED or EarthCraft?
I'm, I'm talking about for any of it. I'm talking about the profession, you know, when all this started way back when, like when LEED started, it was more than guidance because no one was really, there wasn't a lot of, I guess, professional practice in that area. You know, certain people were doing certain pieces. But now we've been practicing the sustainable building for a really long time. And I think we know what is important and what isn't. I mean, not we, because I'm not an engineer or an architect, but the people that are in the space know what needs to be done to build an efficient building. Is it practical? And you don't have to answer this today. You can bring it back at our next meeting. But is it practical and/or possible just to do the steps to make it a sustainable building without paying extra?
Yes. I mean, our, now our, we will have to pay some extra because like for EarthCraft, about 12,000 of that is for architect and engineers' fees to make, to do whatever needs to be done for the certification process, whether we get certified or not. The other half, the other 12,000, I think 10,000 of that is for the effort to go through the certification and then I think 2,000 of it is for the actual certification.
Go ahead, Rob.
For LEED, it's.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, I, I was just piggyback on Lynn's comment, which was supposing that our policy is that we build buildings that could qualify for LEED or EarthCraft, but we don't even pursue those certifications. Do you feel like we have the expertise in the builder that we select or the architect that we select to provide a green building that if we wanted to, could be EarthCraft certified or LEED certified, but we don't need to go down that route?
I may let Bert chime in here too, but I know.
That's what I was saying.
I know part of it is, we can do certain things. The architect and engineers can check certain boxes, but there are, there are some commissioning requirements or like the inspection. I meant, they come out and inspect your building envelope. So there are things that you would miss if you don't hire the certification consultant. Bert, I don't know if you want to add to that.
Everything you guys are saying is correct. I mean, the, the state procurement registry and everything that's run through the border regions and GIsVic, they have their, they have their own program now because they're doing exactly what you said, which is we're just going to specify what we think is the most sustainable thing. And then in answer to your question, yes, the architect and engineer can make sure that what is being drawn is sustainable. Michael is also right. As part of that specification, they require you to have a commissioning agent come in and validate that even the architect drew it, the contractor installed it appropriately. And they, so they test the building envelope and they test the equipment to make sure that the efficiencies that were spec'd are done. So there's always going to be a validation cost that's just driving that number down. Long-term, I think you could absolutely, you know, update your policy to make sure that you're, you're driving down the consultant cost and just saying, we're going to design to a sustainable, a sustainable, you know, way of building. And we're going to make sure that there's a commissioning agent that comes in at the end of the project to validate that the architect and contractor did what we had, we had specified.
But do we really need, I'm just asking, the commissioning agent at this point or?
You do. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that's what, like 12,000 from what, if we do the EarthCraft depending?
Well, that's a break, breakdown, I think it's $2,000 for the certification. This is off the top of my head. I think the actual commissioning of it was roughly four grand.
Okay.
But yeah, it's, it's about that. And then, so you're still cutting the number down.
I'm all for cutting that number down.
Yeah.
And then I have a question about the warehouse, not about like the sustainable part. But, and I had to run out for a second, so I might have missed it. So the warehouse part is a storage facility? Is it also where they're going to repair equipment?
They might do some minor repairs there, but it's, it's, it's going to have equipment and materials.
Okay. So is it safe to not have windows and some kind of, I mean, I don't know. It feels like that in the dead of summer, it could be 150 degrees in a building with no windows, but maybe.
We'll have fans in there, but I mean, if they're working, if they're in the building, they're probably going to have the doors up and, you know, we're putting heating units in there just to keep things from freezing in the winter. But we don't think it's really probably makes sense to condition, air conditioning.
Okay. All right. Well, and I assume that means it'll have running water in the building?
Yes, it has, it has a small restroom in there.
And a sink to wash your hands or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we will see this. Do you have a deadline for yourself or?
As Bert said, we're in design now, so, and I, I mean, what I'm hearing is there's a, y'all are okay with EarthCraft, but I'm not sure if we're saying. y'all are okay with EarthCraft, but I'm not sure if we're saying, don't go for the certification, just follow the EarthCraft.
That's what I'm saying, but I'm one vote.
It sounds like it's a negligible, negligible difference between.
Twenty thousand.
Well, it's, when it comes down to it, by the time you do the commissioning agent, you probably only would save like eight to ten thousand dollars.
In that case, then it would be worth having us here.
We need to look at that policy though. If someone's keeping up with this kind of stuff, we need to evaluate what that policy says. And change, well, right, and change it. And then if you could make sure we get the proper memo, that would be great. No, that's okay. It happens. Thank you, Michael. And Richard, Blotto, you are up. Add me my millions.
Mayor, I'll read the resolution.
I'm voting on this. Do you still have to read the resolution? This isn't, not an action item.
No, he said no.
Okay, I didn't think so. You know, you're welcome to, but I don't think it's necessary.
So this is a discussion item about the twenty twenty four year end, uh, budget amendment for year end. This is a, uh, kind of a standard procedure where we align all of our revenues and expenses the best we can as we prepare for the audit for this year. I'll highlight a couple of them within the memo. I tried to attach as much explanation as we could for the amendments we're ranking. I'll highlight a little bit of what went on during the year that we're, as we prepare for the uh, audit, I will remind everybody, these are preliminary unaudited numbers, so they are subject to change. I don't anticipate significant changes, but they are, uh, could change slightly based on how the audit goes. Um, focusing on the general fund, we had about four revenue sources that came in, uh, stronger than expected. And so we're going to increase, uh, a general fund revenue by about nine hundred thousand budgeted, general fund revenue by nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, there, while most departments look like they're going to come in under expenses within the general fund, there were a couple of departments that did require a budget adjustment to, uh, align their expenditures with actuals. But still, we're going to lower the budgeted use of fund balance from six hundred and twenty thousand dollars to about three hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars with this action. Uh, hoping as we go through the process and close the books, that we're really hoping to, that'll be zero. Obviously that is the goal. If not, add a little bit to fund balance. So that at a high level is what the general fund looks like. Uh, all the other funds are really just aligning actuals to, uh, actual revenue and expenditures to results for the year. I'll highlight a couple of others within the grant fund. Uh, is all the grant activity that we had for the year, we're just aligning that with the, the budget with the actual there. Uh, within Splosh One, um, as y'all know, that is uh, seized collections within Splosh One in March of twenty twenty four. We are now into Splosh Two and started collections there. So Splosh One, you're going to see a, a use of fund balance or reserves within Splosh One as we spend that money down. And, uh, uh, we saw that we're adjusting for that activity this year, um, within Splosh One. And then finally, there was a, a, uh, investment within the stormwater utility fund. Uh, a pretty heavy investment in repairs and maintenance of our infrastructure. So we are, there will be some use of fund balance for the first time since I've been here, uh, the stormwater utility funds of about two hundred thousand dollars. Their reserves or fund balance are about three point eight million dollars. So they'll still have a healthy amount, uh, outstanding after that. So.
That's three point eight million just in storm, not just stormwater.
Stormwater. Yes, it's a proprietary fund. It can only be restricted to poor use of stormwater.
Right, but part of the re, I don't know if Michael's still here, but part of the reason we have such a big stormwater budget, Eric, reven, is because pro, because when there's a catastrophe or a big emergency, it's very expensive.
That's, that's right, Mayor. We want to be sure we're ready for any kind of issues that may arise.
Okay.
And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
But maybe we should spend a little bit of it. Maybe y'all could come back to us with a plan. That's a lot. Cause we do, can borrow money for stormwater emergencies. All right, questions? Uh, Catherine.
Thank you. When is the audit?
Uh, so they will start field work March tenth. They'll be here for two weeks, uh, March tenth and then the week of March seventeenth. And, uh, we expect, uh, we have to have financials turned into the state by June thirtieth. But our goal is to always, uh, be done the end of May, first part of June with financial statements then.
Okay. Let me ask about the stormwater fund. It says you're going to use the reserves. And that's not, in other words, unreserved fund and yes, the unreserved fund?
It's, yes, it's unrestricted within the general fund is what we're using. Yes.
Okay. So those are the same terms.
Correct.
Okay. And then uh, storm utility, uh, are, are you zeroing out ARPA, ARPA two and CARES?
We're close to, uh, so CARES two will have, and we actually just made some payments earlier this year. So we'll have about a hundred thousand dollars, maybe a little bit less than CARES two left. Uh, ARPA one, we are very, very close. So ARPA one was the eighteen million dollars from the federal government that we received. We had to have it all obligated by December of twenty twenty four, which we did. And now we have to have it all spent by the end of December, twenty twenty six. We are very close to spending it all. Uh, we've got about four hundred thousand dollars left to spend there. Uh, uh, maybe five hundred thousand dollars actually left to spend within, uh, ARPA one. And I anticipate we'll get that, uh, spent this year is the goal on that. Uh, ARPA two, uh, we are moving money into the general fund to fund us some operations there. And then the majority of the rest of the money is for, uh, mental health clinician and ambulance for another year and things of that nature.
So that'll eventually.
That should be gone this year is the plan. Yes. That's, there might be some trickle over into next year. Uh, but, uh, majority of that money should either be transferred to the general fund or spent within ARPA two this year. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Joe.
Hi, Richard. Um, let's talk Gatsby. Seriously, I mean, I just want to say I have these questions because I, I know about little enough to get in trouble on payroll accounting when you have somebody that has excess vacation. So the budget adjustment for a vacation buyback is approved by council merely because we're following governmental accounting standards. Cause in the private sector, it's a merely, it's a general ledger accounting because the liability is already there. You're just moving it into another uh, paid, uh, liability and payroll.
That's correct. Yeah. So we have to recognize the expense. So we do budget for it each year. Uh, we have to recognize the expense in the general fund and we account for the liability in a separate uh, uh, long-term debt is what it's called, uh, fund basically. So we, we count for the liability in a separate fund. Yes.
And, and because it's a, a budgeted adjustment and has to come to council, that one line, even if you just had one line item, that's it. You could be one memo with that one thing. So I just want to follow that down a rabbit hole just a little bit more on vacation. If you have people leaving, um, they've got a crude vacation. And I don't recall council seeing us paying out a crude vacation of any other employees since I've been on council. It might've been in a budget adjustment. I might've just missed it. It's just, it's, it's, you know, they get your crude vacation when they walk out the door, right?
Yes, correct.
Are you still doing the same process though? You're following a budget amendment, even for anybody that just turn your over.
Correct, correct. So.
That's okay.
Fortunately, don't have a ton of turnover, but then some departments have the budget to absorb, but might offset it with, uh, underruns and other line items, for example, or something. I kind of be able to absorb them.
And, uh, not for tonight, but it's all related to budget. I'm assuming you're, when you get close to closing out the budget, we're, we're going to identify, I remember the, just the one-time federal funds, right? I want to, I want to kind of have that in the focus when we, in the next uh, few weeks where we know when that all ends and what that amount would be total for like twenty twenty five, right? And then, so we know twenty twenty six, that's absence of those couple of million dollars or whatever that might be. That's additional funds that we gotta look for revenue sources on.
Most of our, uh, federal funds are, um, capital project related. Uh, but we do, uh, grant funds, I should say, are capital project related. Uh, ARPA two does house a couple of operating expense, again, the ambulance and mental health clinician and things of that nature. The general fund itself, Fund one hundred, does not receive any, uh, federal or grant dollars or anything.
But we used it to add for police salaries.
That was the ARPA money, yes.
So that would be in that number. So I just want to make sure that when we come to this next conversation that we're going to have in a few months.
Sure.
That we know, here's that, what that looks like, the, the, the death. Okay, thanks.
Absolutely.
Um, just a quick question. Um, when it says, you know, the city was awarded a hundred and sixteen thousand dollar grant from the US Department, you're not accounting for it till we have money in hand or I just.
So it's a reimbursement grant. So we have to spend and then we turn in the money, uh, we turn in a reimbursement request and they'll cut us a check, basically send us the money.
So have they cut us the check?
Uh, the Department of Energy, we just turned those, we actually just got those vehicles in December. So we just turned it in and, uh, uh, turned in the paperwork to process. So it, it's in the process of being reviewed and approved and we should get the fund shortly. Yes.
Okay. Fingers crossed.
Right.
We'll get it. I, I have confidence.
Oh, I'm so glad.
Yes. That, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So that was just kind of my across the board, like when it says grant was awarded, like I just kind of wanted to further define what awarded meant.
Sure. So most grants function as a reimbursable grant. So for example, if we're using Splosh dollars, we'll, uh, 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 pay for it with Splosh dollars and then reimburse the Splosh fund when we get the grant dollars in basically with the funds. So.
So like worst case scenario that we've used Splosh funds for something and we don't get reimbursed. I presume we're only using Splosh funds when it's legal to use Splosh funds.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
So worst case scenario would be we would have to, assuming we still have Splosh funds left or whatever, we would have to scale back other projects if the reimbursement doesn't come.
Correct.
Okay. So as we get towards the end of the Splosh pot of money, we need to be, well, what year are we on in Splosh? Two maybe? Year one with the new one. So we have a few years and by then we should know what the federal government's doing about reimbursement. We just need to be very careful, I think. I'm, I'm just a little skeptical. I don't do chaos well. Um, and on here, uh, so I want to clarify something. I think Catherine asked you. The, the reserves we used for stormwater, I'm trying to find it, W, that was stormwater reserves, right? Not city, not our other reserve fund. Stormwater has its, because it's a dedicated fund, it has its own reserves. Okay. And but also we had increased stormwater revenue. So we were able to offset. It would be interesting in the future to have a discussion about what's comfortable in terms of a reserve fund for that versus what we could be spending. I mean, we may, given the amount of work we already do annually on stormwater, we may be at our limit on what we can do. But Eric, it would be really interesting to have a discussion moving forward about whether X number of millions is the right amount. Maybe it should be more because some of these projects cost millions or maybe it should be less. Because we can in theory borrow from FIFA and pay it back with the funds. That's why that fund exists at the state level for stormwater emergencies. Okay. All right, anybody else? Will we see this in two weeks? Is that what your plan is?
Yes.
Consent? Consent? Okay, consent. Thank you. All right. Public comment. I have one card. Mr. Eric Oliver, if you will approach the microphone, you'll have three minutes. If anybody.
Not only one?
Nope.
Oh, wow. Uh, hey, I'm just up here to, uh, clarify a couple of things, comments that were made. I'm just, I guess I'm confused or there was some miscommunication here. Uh, I kind of got the impression that Rachel gave y'all the impression that the fields over at, uh, Brook Run weren't being utilized. Uh, I walk, I take advantage of Brook Run every day. I walk scout, you know, between three thirty and five thirty every day over by the soccer fields, multi-sport fields, shall call them. Uh, and usually DHS, lacrosse and soccer, girls and boys are practicing on those fields. Every time I'm over there, with the exception of maybe game day. So they're over there with regular frequency and I just confused. I, I kind of got the impression that maybe y'all thought it wouldn't be utilized and I'm positive. Well, I'm assuming that, you know, the DHS is remunerating y'all for the usage of that field. Uh, the other thing is, is, uh, let's see. Oh, yeah. Stacy, you are aware that the field at PMS is not in a condition that can be utilized for regulation sports safely. You are aware of that, correct?
Sorry, not a two-way conversation.
Okay, well, I just want to put that, you know, it isn't. It just isn't. Uh, the other thing is, oh, yeah. It is a fact that the parks bond did fail. However, the truth is is you failed to put a package together that would pass. Having said that, I want to know, and I'm sure other people are curious to know, how much money has been spent on trails since the park bonds failed? I would like to know that. Hopefully y'all can, uh, get that information out. That's really all I got. I mean, we, we both want the same thing here. We want world-class resources for our student athletes and city of Dunwoody to play, to compete, to learn how to be decent human beings in all the sports metaphors. Okay? So I'm counting on y'all to get that done. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm going to break my own, this is not a two-way conversation, but I want to clarify something because it's the end of the meeting and I won't be able to do it again. There are different pots of money that legally can be used for different things. So the first Splosh didn't allow park money at all. The second Splosh, because our infrastructure needs were so great, we allocated one point six percent for parks. So I don't think we built any trails since the bond failed. I think we've done a little bit of design work. Um, I could be wrong, but oh, Ashford Dunwoody, but that's a whole different bucket of money. It's, it's hotel motel tax. It's apples to zebras. So the reality is, is that almost all the funds we get for capital have in some way, shape or form been restricted. The bond would have given us some flexibility based on state law, but we can only spend money. Uh, we're not Sandy Springs. So Sandy Springs takes, and the school system apparently has a bazillion dollars that they could buy this building. We don't have much unrestricted funds to use for capital projects. So we haven't built, I don't think we've, except for Ashford Dunwoody, which is again actually critical to our economic future, but also a totally different pot of money. Uh, we haven't spent, built any new trails. And even if we had, that is a pot of money that could not be used for parks or recreation improvement. It's just the way it works in the state of Georgia. So, okay. Mm, nope. Okay. All right. Any for, oh, wait, look at the agenda. Huh? Uh, city manager comments.
We do need an executive session tonight for real estate and legal.
Okay. Uh, council comments. Joe.
Um, last week, Andrew's here in the room. Uh, last week I watched an hour-long video of the horrific murders by Hamas of the innocent and unarmed civilians. And it was brutal and grotesque. Um, the brutality of these poor innocent people being just absolutely, it's, it's, it's sickening. Um, and I wholeheartedly support Israel's right to exist and to defend themselves. I'm not going to solve the Middle East crisis and that's not what we're here to do here on, on city, but I do believe that local leaders are important to speak out and stand up for, uh, freedom, democracy and liberty and, and so on worldwide. And it starts at the local level. On that note, three years ago today, Russia invaded Ukraine unprovoked, causing tens of thousands of deaths in Ukraine, both civilians and combatants. Like Hamas, there's heaps of evidence demonstrating Russia has committed war crimes against civilians and combatants on video evidence, including summary executions. And tonight, once again, Russia is bombing civilians and civilian cities, non-military targets in cities and villages throughout Ukraine. And unfortunately, I never thought I would see it in my lifetime here in, in the United States as the freedom and beacon of liberty in the world, but the current administration holding the White House today, acting in official capacity, has voted against a UN resolution condemning Russia for their invasion and holding a Putin regime singularly responsible and accountable for their atrocities. They voted against it. We saw them aligning with terrorists, oligarchies and non-democratic communist regimes, regime, regimes of North Korea and Russia. I never in my life think I thought I would see that. So I want to just say I stand to support and condemn all violence, condemn all hatred, condemn all bigotry, condemn all racism to smort democracies, freedom, liberty and the truth. Thank you.
Anyone else? Comments, comments? Okay. I need a motion to go to executive session.
Move to, uh, move to go to executive session for purposes of real estate and legal.
Second, uh, move by Stacy, second by Catherine, all in favor, uh, any discussions, seeing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Huh? One back. Move to adjourn.
We gotta wait for Sharon.
Sharon who?
Come on.
Uh, motion drops, uh. Adjourn, yeah, motion.
Second.